Person Nichols.
Here.
Secretary Demick here. Commissioner Hope.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Commissioner Aubrey.
Here.
And Trustee Black, sir.
Here.
Okay. We have the minutes from the June 11th meeting. We had our last meeting. Anybody having any comments? We're all in on a motion to approve.
I didn't hear him call my name. Did he call his name?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I guess I didn't hear him, thank you.
My alarm went off right in the middle of your name, so I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. And now we'll open up our public comment. We can open the public hearing. The public can speak. Which our master plan is well along the way. If we're looking for final approval, we have a, one of the final steps is to have a open meeting for the public to comment. And I don't see any members of the public here. Do...
So then what you can do, just make it, you know, open the public hearing. Did we receive any written correspondence at the township about the master plan? Sometimes you might...
Nothing was told me and heard, none that you've heard of?
No.
Is there enough people here, so can you enclose the public hearing?
I'll make a motion we close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close the public hearing. Okay, now we deliberate and consider adoption of the plan with or without changes. So here is the revised master plan.
Yeah, so just, obviously, we're at the tail end of this process. We, that public hearing was noticed in the newspaper in accordance with state laws. We, in advance of the hearing, we also sent out this draft to several governmental entities that were legally required to get a letter saying that we have prepared our draft. Here's the link to the master, to the website where you can download the draft. That included our surrounding township, cities, county, and other selected entities like road authorities and transportation authorities. So ultimately, the, the master plan, if you have any questions for me, be glad to try and go through them. I think for you, kind of giving Pat the lowdown a little bit on the master plan. This is, this is a, it's a, it's not a code, it's not a legal document, it is a policy guide. And so it doesn't have, you know, it has many recommendations included in it. A lot of the recommendations speak to maybe zoning things, a thing that we look at in our zoning ordinance, but that would be down the road. So ultimately, the, to officially end the process would be the planning commission making a motion or passing a resolution of adoption of this master plan. So I know that there are a couple of tweaks of Wally that you had indicated to me. On page sixteen, you had noticed two typos.
I don't know how they stood out at me, I usually don't catch typos.
We call it each China instead of East China in one location, and then typo on, on one, the word one-third. And then you had a comment that we should, throughout the document, just make sure that if there is any reference to Detroit Edison, then that be changed to DTE Energy.
Yeah, some of the places we refer to the property as Detroit Edison property, owned by DTE, and it really isn't any legal entity called Detroit Edison anymore. That company is gone, so.
Yeah.
Probably makes more sense. And they get, I know inside the company, they, they got kind of fussy about people not switching, so.
Yep, make sure to refer it. So we'll, we'll just do kind of a word search for Detroit Edison and do any replacements for DTE Energy. Were there any other comments, questions, or revisions that you had seen in your review of the draft?
What, I let it sit for a couple of months and went back and read it cold, so. The one thing that, that struck me a little bit was when we were talking about the demographics, and we talked about the people that were working for the different age groups and everything and we, and everything else, but we didn't have one for retirees. That looked a little, maybe just a little off, being, being one of them and having, living around a whole bunch of them, it seemed like that was important.
Yeah. Well, is there a specific location that you're looking at? Is that what we're talking about, like?
I noticed that when we got back, we were talking about what percentage of the people were commuting to work.
Oh, I see.
Employment by occupation, yep.
Oh, I see, okay.
Page twenty, twenty-one.
So that table, you're wondering where, or table ten as well, right? We're talking about employment by industry, employment by occupation.
Yeah, maybe one of the...
Where it doesn't refer to retirees.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the way that it works with the Census Bureau is that the number, like for table ten, on page twenty, the total of all of those industries at the bottom is sixteen-hundred-and-eight-six. That's employed persons sixteen years and older. So I guess what we didn't do is we didn't subtract who's, who's not employed.
Yeah.
That would be, you know, people who either retired or who, for whatever reason, aren't considered to be in the workforce.
Yeah.
So maybe you have a disability or something like that. You're considered by the Census not to be...
I, I mean, it doesn't make any difference to the big scheme of things, it just, all of a sudden it hit me.
We certainly document throughout the plan that, you know, one of the, one of the demographic insights is that you are an increasingly aging community.
Yeah.
And that your population segment, that is an older segment, is getting
Yeah, because that's...
Larger as a percentage of the...
That was, you know, we stood out as, as being an older population, so.
Yep. So this resolution of adoption...
Actually, I just got one comment too. In very opening paragraph, I have slight problem with the word stagnated as far as the population.
Okay.
Because it just has such a negative connotation to me. I'd much prefer remain steady or some other verbiage as far as the, the population, which is...
Yeah, page one, first paragraph.
Yeah, the lesson, yes, sir.
Since two thousand, the population has, could we say leveled off?
Leveled off, remain steady or...
Remain steady, yeah. How about remain steady?
Which is opening paragraph, it just left a little negative connotation for the whole time.
We could say, because, let's see, it was sixty-three hundred residents by two thousand, it's at, I'm sorry, thirty-six, thirty residents in two thousand, and it reached thirty-seven-oh-four. So we could say the population increased slightly, reaching thirty-seven-oh-four.
Sure.
Okay. We'll make that change. Any other comments or questions or changes?
At least it shows you we read it.
Yeah. So we've got Wally's couple of typos on page sixteen, we've got the Detroit Edison to DTE Energy change, we've got the revision to the first paragraph on page one.
Yep.
So what you could do is if, if one of the members is willing to offer the resolution before you do it, under the, now therefore be it resolved that the content of this document, together with all maps attached to and contained herein, maybe just add a phrase immediately after that saying, with the revisions as noted during this meeting.
This meeting, okay. Jackie? We have a, a copy of the whole motion, so you don't have to write this one down, because this is an extensive one. Give it to me.
And add it up. So just make sure to add that phrase, with the revisions as noted, this meeting is hereby adopted by the township. Cindy, I want to have the word document, so you don't have to read it. So yeah, that would, you would just need to pass this resolution. You don't even have to read it. You can simply say the Wally motion, you know.
Cindy will kill me if I don't read it, no?
Oh, go ahead.
Do we have a, somebody want to support?
I'll support.
Herb supports?
Second.
A member, yeah. Herb sup, Herb offered it. Larry seconded it, supported it. The following resolution was offered by a member of Herb, supported by a member Larry, whereas the East Charter, the town, Charter Township of East China has established a planning commission under the Planning Enabling Act, State Public Act thirty-three of two thousand eight is amended, and with the revisions noted at this meeting, whereas the Township Planning Commission is required by Section seven of that act to make and adopt a master plan as a guide for the physical development of the township, and whereas an updated master plan was presented to the public at a hearing held on October eighth, twenty twenty-four, before the planning commission, with notice of the hearing provided in accordance with Section forty-three, Public Act forty, thirty-three of two thousand eight as amended. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the content of this document, together with all maps attached to and contained herein, is hereby adopted by the Planning Commission of East China Township, by Planning Conship, Town, Commission, as the East China Township Master Plan on this eighth day of October, twenty twenty-four. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? None? Absent? None? Resolution is declared adopted.
So what I will do is, if, I don't know how you normally would formalize this resolution, you probably just assign it a resolution number, like, maybe this is the first, probably your first resolution of this calendar year, so maybe it's like twenty twenty-four dash oh-one, however you normally do it. And then if, if someone consigned, it could be, it could be the clerk, or it could be the planning commission secretary, and I'll just take an updated version, a signed version of this resolution. And then what I'll do is we'll insert this into the final adopted report with the revisions that we have, so the resolution will be kind of in the front cover page. We will create that final adopted report. The one question, sometimes communities, the township board may have, may be interested in passing a resolution of concurrence, essentially saying that we support the action of the planning commission for having adopted the plan. So that's something that, that you can, the township board may be interested in doing. You're still...
I'm sure they will.
So I'll share that information with Cindy, and if she, you know, she thinks that's a good idea to have the township board do that, we can add that kind of resolution of concurrence.
So, do you want this one signed?
If, if, if you're making the official action, I think what probably would be easier to do is to have it typed up.
Okay.
So that we can add the tweet to it.
Then we'll sign it, yeah.
And sign that version, it'll be nice, clean.
That, that works better.
Yep. So I'll work with, I'll email you the updated Word document, so we can...
And if it's going to be by the secretary, Steve would be the one to sign it, so.
Sounds good. After, if the township board decides to do a resolution of concurrence, we'll make sure that's inserted into the kind of inside front cover as well. Ultimately, once we have that adopted plan in place, we'll upload it to the township website, and then the final step in the process, and we'll help the township take care of this, is one last round of letters to those same entities notifying them that the plan has been adopted, and that they can download a copy from our website of the adopted plan.
We didn't get any feedback from any of them anyways, huh?
Yep. So, yeah, but that doesn't often happen, so.
Yeah, we didn't put any nasty things right on the Marine City border or something like that.
Sure, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Let's get back to our agenda, where I buried it. Unfinished business, we have is none. So for new business, we have a housing-focused zoning amendment, HRI grant program, and Adam's going to tell us all about it.
Right, okay. So, to answer you, just a memo with regard to this effort. So, earlier this year, so in January of this year, MISTHA, Michigan State Housing Development Authority, created a new grant program, Housing Readiness Incentive Grant Program. It's, I think it was five million dollars, and they've since allocated another couple of million, the state of Michigan did, for any local government in the state of Michigan to receive funding, one hundred percent state funding, zero percent local match, which is pretty rare for a grant program, to help with, to help communities just review their plans and policies and zoning codes as it might relate to housing. The goal of the state program is to increase housing supply, which, you know, increase supply helps to lower housing costs overall, so that there is, you know, less of a housing affordability concern throughout the state. The goal, of course, is to address some of the market challenges that have, you know, that we've experienced over the last, really, decade of this housing market. It is not a program that requires you or forces you to do any particular change to your zoning ordinance. It's just a matter of you reviewing your zoning ordinance. It's an opportunity to help fund the effort, to evaluate it and consider what changes might be appropriate as it relates to housing. The timing is perfect, really, for East China. We're not, you know, in the master plan, we're not proposing to, you know, we're not expecting to have massive growth in East China Township, we're not expecting to put up new apartments, you know, throughout the community, nothing like that. But there are some things in the zoning or, or in the master plan that speak to housing. We talked about, you know, housing that might be needed for the senior population. We talked about, you know, there's a, a kind of a mixed residential, future land use classification, so there may be some tweaks that need to be made in our zoning ordinance. There, the master plan talks about we should evaluate our residential kind of development options, such as planned unit development or cluster housing options, just to make sure that we have those in place that can result in, in good development. Maybe it's a development that has multiple types of residential, it could, maybe it's like condos, you know, up by the road, and maybe single-family residential on the back, and it preserves open space or provides recreational or civic amenities. So, kind of reached out to the township and Cindy and presented this opportunity, and really with the idea that, you know, this is an opportunity for you to take a look at your zoning ordinance. I don't know when the last time you've taken a kind of a deeper, broader look at your zoning ordinance as opposed to addressing just a specific issue that you can revise. And so this gives you kind of a pool of money to be able to, you know, consider, what, what are some things that, that we can be looking at in our zoning? And it doesn't, the funds are designed for, you know, with a housing emphasis, but it doesn't prevent you from looking at other things in your zoning ordinance, such as your site plan review process, or special land use review process, or planned unit development review process. Maybe there are some things in that process, maybe there's a step that isn't necessary that just kind of adds to the length of time that it takes to get a project, whether it's a commercial project or a residential project, through the, through the kind of governmental review system. Maybe we can eliminate a step, maybe that means we can save a month or two, a couple of months for a developer, or just make it that much easier to get a project through the system and approved. We can look at, does your, does your zoning ordinance, does it even define the different types of housing that might be available out there? Does it define attached residential, does it define, define senior housing and, and other kind of more modern housing types? And then, once defined, does it, does it list what zoning districts these housing units or these types of housing, you know, could be located in? So that's just kind of a flavor of the, the review and amendment process that could be funded through this, this grant.
We kind of did a bit of that with the commercial zoning ordinance a few years ago when we...
Sure.
We, we tried to reduce it from three to two.
Right, consolidating a couple, yeah, maybe you could look at consolidating a residential, you know, two residential zoning districts into one, that might be something.
That when it wasn't clear what you could build in one and two and three, they were all overlapping, so.
Often what happens when you take a, take a step back and do a detailed review of your zoning ordinance, you'll find some things that need to be revised, or some inconsistencies.
Okay.
And so this is really an opportunity to improve your zoning ordinance, specifically related to housing, but also improve it in other areas as well as part of this effort. So, with that said, we're going to be helping you through this process, and that means we'll be working with the planning commission to present our, the results of an initial review of your zoning ordinance, for you to help then tell us, okay, based on this, yeah, let's, let's move forward with, you know, these changes here and there. And then we'll help you draft that actual language, we'll help you go through the process to ultimately, you know, adopt some changes, as you see necessary, which is the only choice. Just to kind of set the stage for this, you know, the first part of what we'd be looking at is, is what was said in the master plan about considerations that we might make in terms of zoning ordinance changes. So the master plan, you know, did speak to some of these specifically. First, you know, the master plan, we have that future land use map in the master plan, it outlined three different residential zoning districts, I'm sorry, future land use classifications, single-family, multi-family, mixed residential. It also discussed in the medical campus, future land use classification, that there could be opportunity for maybe a mixed, mixed development or mixed use development that included some residential. So in that sense, we can look at your existing zoning districts to make sure that they're, are consistent with the vision of those residential future land use classifications, and if not, we can make some potential tweaks and changes there. Kind of on page two of the memo, there's other items that I just pulled almost directly from the master plan. These are things that we would just make sure as we review the zoning ordinance, that these ideas or goals or objectives or strategies that were included in the plan would be reflected in your zoning ordinance. You know, just number two, promoting viable and safe residential environments compatible with rural character. That's still our overall goal, this is a rural community, we don't want to pretend this to be, you know, a community that we're not. And so that's, we, you know, any changes that we make need to be rooted in kind of rural character of the township. There may be an opportunity to encourage new residential development in appropriate areas as designated on the future land use map, which are served by public infrastructure and services. The master plan on page thirty-five talked about how we could allow cluster housing, planned unit development, and open space preservation developments, consistent with zoning to preserve open space and provide a mixture of densities and residential unit types. So following that objective, we'll look at your residential development options to make sure that they're available to encourage that type of development. Maybe in your mixed use, future land use classification, I'm sorry, your mixed residential future land use classification, you can look at making sure that at least it would allow for things like townhomes, row houses, stacked branches, and live-work units. Number six, the master plan talks about how we ought to encourage senior independent housing and residential dependent care facilities to support the needs of the township's aging population. And so as part of a review of your zoning ordinance, we'll make sure that, you know, these are appropriately defined and allowed within certain districts. Maybe senior, senior independent housing could be a special land use within your single-family residential district. Not sure that would be something that we can just, you know, discuss as a group. Some other ones, number eight, review the zoning ordinance to seek to eliminate barriers and disincentives to non-residential mixed use development projects that contribute to the local economy and are supported by the community. So really, just kind of talking about, you know, that, that relates to commercial development as well as residential development. But in our, we get an opportunity through this grant to look at our processes in general, to see what can we do to encourage development that's appropriate within our community, and not, you know, disincentivize or eliminate any existing barriers in our code to, to allowing that to happen. And there also is a recommendation in the plan to consider the creation of a new residential zoning district. This would be really just, I think, the largest area where it's identified on the future land use map, is right across from the hospital area, some kind of a front inch along, what road is that again?
Pettigame.
Pettigame, right. So, it's designated on the future land use map, at the very least, let's make sure that we have a zoning district that relates to that future land use classification, so that if a property owner wanted to seek a rezoning to that new district, they could do that. So, we're going to be working through this project now that the master plan is complete, we kind of have our roadmap for what we ought to tackle, and really starting now and into the end of this year and into the winter and maybe the spring of twenty twenty-five is when we'll have a handful of meetings with, with the planning commission, reviewing some of these ideas and potential zoning amendments. Any, any, any questions about kind of this, this grant? I don't know how many of you have, have any heard that the township received the grant or was successful in receiving a grant. But like I said, I think this is a good opportunity, and it's perfect timing, given that we just finished our master plan, and the master plan said we ought to look at these things, and there's one.
Seems to be pretty open as far as required outcomes, is sort of...
There is no specific outcome, so MISTHA does not require you to do, you know, X, Y, and Z. These funds are made available to you, for you to review and evaluate your policies and codes as you see fit. Really, it's, the, the outcome is, we said we'd go through a process of evaluating the ordinance and considering amendments, and that's what, that's what we, we need to do to fulfill the grant requirements. So we'll be following up with you with, really, the first step is to do that review of your zoning ordinance and to come with our findings, essentially. Here's what we found, here are some things that you may want to consider, and then based on the direction from you, we'll help you come up with potential zoning ordinance amendment language to review and consider.
Very good.
We do want to have one, we call it a workshop, we're not exactly sure what that would look like, but maybe just a, a work session where public are involved, are invited, or maybe specific stakeholders, maybe you have larger property owners, maybe it's developers in the community or real estate agents, just to kind of get their feedback on, you know, what's the status of the housing market here, what are, what types of housing units are in demand, price points, what are, what are some things that we can do as a local municipality to help, you know, encourage new housing development? And maybe they can provide us with some good feedback on things that we can consider. You know, one example, and I didn't look it up before I came to try out to do this, as another barrier, a common barrier, you might have, you might not even realize that in your zoning ordinance, you have a minimum square footage for a, a single-family dwelling unit. Maybe it's fifteen hundred square feet, I wouldn't be surprised if it's something like that. You know, in today's day and age, where you think about an empty nester, a couple, or just, you know, a young, young adult or a single person living alone, do you really need fifteen hundred square feet anymore? And just by making a tweak like reducing it to twelve hundred, or a thousand, or, or heaven forbid, eight fifty.
Or 300 foot tiny house.
That's something that can encourage housing construction potentially, it can encourage a lower, you know, price point so that affordability for people who need a relatively more affordable home, you know, that's an example of a governmental maybe hurdle or barrier that isn't necessary. I don't see it as necessary. The reason for that was we didn't want to overcrowd our community and we want to have, you know, high quality housing. You do have high quality housing, but you could also have high quality smaller units at the same. Just because you're requiring it to be bigger doesn't mean that it's better necessarily. So it's kind of an old school mentality that we might find that's one of the, you know, one of the things that you have in your ordinance that you could consider.
We, my wife and I spent the weekend at one of the little cabins in the KOA campground. We decided we definitely are not tiny house.
We're not cut out for 400 square feet. So any questions, comments, or thoughts about this?
No, anybody?
I'm looking forward to working with you in the months.
Good. I know what an effort it was going over the, that commercial one at the time, so
Yeah.
it's really good to have some funding.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, with that, is there any other business to be discussed, anybody?
I just have a question. This is something that I know we, we went over before with some of our projects, but lighting in our township.
Lighting?
Lighting.
I noticed that.
It continues to be an issue, not just with commercial, but with residential. And I, and I know our ordinance has language in it about shielding lights, and it's the boilerplate things that are in most zoning ordinances. But while we have Adam here, are there, are there other resources to help our building official? Or our code enforcement officer? I know we've, we've played around with the light levels on our commercial projects of foot candles and things like that. But there are, there are other requirements like, like dark sky certification fixtures and things. Is there anything more that we can use to supplement in our zoning ordinance to help this issue? Because it's, even though it's defined, it's still arbitrary. Because I keep hearing from individuals that, you know, so and so put up a light fixture, and it may be shielded, but the glow is like watching a football game at the East China Stadium. Is there anything else that we can look at to, to kind of clarify this? I don't want to define light fixtures, but from what I've seen, one example is like that dark sky certified light fixture, which is predominantly they're just downlights. You know, it's, it's meant to stop this overwhelming glow that spreads 12 yards down. Is there anything, you know, can we look at that a little bit more?
One of the, the biggest offenders in my area is that the guy two doors, three doors up has a series of lamps along his driveway, they're nice, they're nice little, you know, lamps, but they just, they shine everywhere. And all the way out to the driveway, thank God, he's got a six car garage between him and me, but he just, they have to have all the lights on all the time, he's got a skunks on every door, and it's like daylight in his yard.
One of the worst offenders is residential or pole barn floodlights.
Yeah.
That are aimed out on an angle, those are, some of them are the worst. And it's harder to police the residential areas because, at least for non-residential, when they come before you for site plan review, you can ask them, hopefully, the way to take a look at your zoning ordinance to see what it says, to make sure.
I know we modified that with one of our past projects, but I still hear complaints.
Yeah, so if it is a, yeah, so let's say it's a site plan that came before you that you approved, and it was approved with, you know, directed downward, and it had the shielding, and it had certain wattage. So you can always go back and enforce the approved site plan.
And we usually bring that up and make a point of talking about it for commercial ones, so that's probably not the biggest problem.
No, that's the only chance we get is typically on our actual projects.
But sometimes you approve a site plan and, and, you know, they tell you what level it's going to be, but then the contractor doesn't actually buy the, buy the luminaire at that level, they just put it in, right? And then you see it, and it's like, wow, did we really approve that? Well, I know that you can get, you know, like, on your phone, you can download an app and actually, it can give you the.
You can download a light meter.
So with that, or you can rent one, or, you know, maybe the, I don't know, maybe the sheriff has something, I'm not sure. So it's, you could, in that case, your code enforcement officer could go out, pay a visit, and try and get them to make the tweak or change. But then there are the older sites that you don't have a plan on file, and you have no idea whether that was approved or not, and they call it non-conforming. So, that one's tough, it's just a matter of, you know, coming to them and maybe having that conversation, okay, we're getting complaints. You want to be a good neighbor, we want you to be a good neighbor, you know, what can, what can you do? And then residential is the hardest. Because that's, that's, that's a tough one.
That, that's usually the most problems.
Right. Most, in my experience, most zoning ordinances don't speak to the residential lighting, they speak to the non-residential.
Ours does make reference to it.
It does, okay.
It does specifically, it doesn't give necessarily a light level, but it does explain to them that it cannot shine onto adjacent properties that need to be shielded, downlights. But it's, 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 it always goes down to interpretation. What is shielded? And, and the fact is, is I can tell you, I get photometrics. There are a bunch of them. You can tell me how much three feet off the ground, it's five foot candles. But at the end of the day, it's, you can see every tree 600 feet away, it's all lit up because it's not, shielding or not, it's not an exact science in my opinion, so.
So hopefully, if you have a rule, especially for like the residential or even the commercial, if, if the regulation is like it's shielding off-site or, or, you know, it's causing glare on the street or on a neighboring property, so in that case, you stand on the neighbor's property who didn't, who issued the complaint. Is it glaring, is it in my eye, then you can enforce that absolutely and say, look, the ordinance says you can't have off-site glare on adjacent properties. And then at that point, at least they need to turn the floodlight or, you know, so it's on a better angle, so it doesn't. So yeah, you can, you can do that, but lighting is really hard because it's so subjective.
Usually a thing I hear about when I bump into people.
I, I think if the township, if it's causing issues in the township, probably the best step is a combination of maybe an educational campaign, like put it in your newsletter, here's our rules on residential lighting. Oh, by the way, business owners, here's our rules on, on non-residential lighting. Make sure that you comply, and we're going to start a more aggressive kind of informational or enforcement program where you can start knocking on doors, hand out a copy of the newsletter, and be like, you know. But that's up to, you know, the township, township board to expend kind of resources and funds to do that.
And we have the newsletter, we just brought that back, so I mean, it's.
So that's a great way to do it, you know, have your spotlight.
Spotlight on.
Spotlight on lighting as, you know, your, your front page article if it's becoming concerned. Did you know that we have these rules?
I think we should make sure that we're doing it too, so that they don't throw that back in our face.
That's true.
When we build this new maintenance building right down the street here, I don't know that we held, held our feet to that too much on that.
We didn't see much of anything on that.
Did we even see a photometric?
I don't know, don't remember.
But that's a good point, before you did, you put that in your newsletter.
Because I know when we put that light up down at that little park, you can see that light all the way down in Marine City.
Terrible, yeah, I'm not even sure how that light got there. But we're, we're meeting it here because our lights out here don't even come on, so.
So there's no, there's no easy answer, but some, some thoughts. Especially if you have good regulations in place, or at least adequate. I wouldn't suggest you add more regulations to it, to be honest, I would suggest that you start better making people aware of what you have in place and enforcing what you have in place.
And that's fine, I'm not, I'm not all for adding more regulation, I just wasn't sure if there was like a certification that would clarify it a little bit clearer and just say, hey, this is, this is defined a little bit clearer than it shall not glare onto a neighbor's property. If you, if, you know, if you pick from whatever, 600 approved light fixtures, you know, and that's, that's, in my experience, some of these certifications are.
Yeah, the dark sky compliant.
Yeah, we have certain cities that we, that I work in, they just flat out say, you need to meet this amount of foot candle, but it has to be one of these certified lights, and you just pick one of the manufacturers and models that are pre-approved, and it's assumed at that point you don't have a problem. It's very easy, it's not arbitrary, whereas someone went to Menards and just picked a light fixture and it had shields on it. It's shielded, well, okay, it's, it's shielded by who? You know, there could be a person blind in one eye, it's shielded by, but again, it's lighting up trees 12 yards away. And it's, it's, you know, you go out with a light meter and again, it's, well, it beats it, but it really does it, I mean. So that was my only question, is there a better way of defining this?
Sure.
Without having it so arbitrary, without, I don't want 30 pages of requirements on light fixtures, trust me, I'm a small government kind of guy. But this is one of the things that I, I still get hit. Go to grocery store, I hear people stop me, you know, other than approving ugly buildings.
Hopefully that gave you some insight, but yeah, definitely it would be worth reviewing your ordinance. And we could potentially tighten it up in terms of, now, I don't know if you want to do like, require residential owners to put in, you know, dark sky compliant lighting necessarily. We'd have to kind of look at to see, I'm curious what the cost difference would be, even for like the residential application. Certainly something to consider, especially for non-residential development.
Yeah, it's really tough, I mean, every single door light fixture that you, that you can buy, they all shine out, that's what they do.
But yeah, some of the worst offenders are townships, cities, schools. You know?
The park.
Yeah, parks.
Well, just, just by virtue of our ordinance mandating that parking lots have to have a certain light level. It's the same thing with, you have to have retention, but at the same time, you have to pave everything. We do it to ourselves, and then we wonder why we fly, and we wonder why we have complaints. We have these rules in place that make absolutely no sense, they contradict each other.
Yeah, you need a minimum light level, but you can't have too much.
We're going to die in that.
Who else said? Everybody spend enough? Okay, I'll entertain a moment for Germany.
I'll make a motion.
Larry?
Okay, it's Florida.
Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, maybe he's adjourned, 7:44.